Good evening. On our call, the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, June the 5th, to order. Roll call?
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Holtz?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
McCusker?
Yes.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. I'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. This time, we'll move to item five on the agenda this evening, public input. Citizens may speak to issues on the agenda before speaking or can speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak on non-public agenda items tonight? Not, we'll move on to item six, the consent agenda. Items in this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For those folks at home, I'll read the consent agenda. Item A is the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending May the 31st, 2012. Item B, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending June 1st, 2012. Item C, the meeting minutes for May 15th, 2012 city council meeting. Item D, Mill Street parking change. Item E, Twin City Container sewer building request. Item F, presidential visit marker. Item G, tower lease agreement. Item H, West Side One amended ponding agreement approval. Item I, second reading and adoption of ordinance 318 and summary of publication amending Chapter 11 of the city code by rezoning certain property from UR to I-1. Item J, second reading and adoption of ordinance 316 adopting the new city code. Item K, approved family dollar to sell tobacco products in city limits. Item L, Resolution 1965 approving a CUP for Lenartson Chuggers. Item M, Resolution 1966 approving variance and CUP for CASA property. Are there any items that anybody wishes to bring down?
Yes. Ian? Oh, go ahead, Bill.
I'd like to bring down L.
Item L will become item 7C. Are there any other items?
Yes, ENF.
Item E is a Twin City Container. It'll become item 7D. And item F is a presidential visit marker.
And then I want a G, Robbie.
Okay. That will be items. Item F becomes 7E and item G becomes 7F. Okay, with that, the Chair will take the motion to approve the consent agenda minus item E, the Twin City Container Sewer Building, item F, presidential visit marker, item G, the tower lease request, and item L, Resolution 1965.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. That brings us to item A tonight, the introduction and first reading of ordinance 319 amending Chapter 111 of the city code licensing and regulating sales of alcoholic beverages. Aaron?
We had a request, which was attached from the Cannon Valley Fair Association requesting that we amend the code by adding July 3rd as another date to extend the hours of the sale of alcohol. I did attach an ordinance that would allow that if the council wants to make that change. One of the things that I do discuss in the memo, though, is that when we do make these changes to the ordinance, it does cost us money. We do have to have all of our codebooks updated. We have to update online. As you know, we just had a city code update done, so we're now using a company that keeps everything up to date and in track for us. And basically, the cost for something like this is probably going to be about $750 or so. And that's, you know, going to be each time we have these code changes and updates, it's about that much to update 20 codebooks, update the website, those sort of things. So, the concern, you know, there's not a reason that we can't do it, but the issue staff has is that if we keep making changes or allowing changes, there is cost involved, and the council should be aware of that, so.
Can we just allow them to stay open without an ordinance change?
No. The ordinance is pretty specific about that, so.
They stay open, they just can't serve up.
Right.
And it's midnight, right? Midnight now?
Yes.
So we'd be extending it to like 1:00 or 2:00 or something?
It would be, in theory, you'd be extending it till 1:00. I don't believe the Fair Board has a 2:00 license, but any of our establishments that have a 2:00 license would be eligible for that unless we restricted that within the ordinance. And I don't believe the ordinance, as drafted, does that.
Yeah, we can't make it specific just for the fair. It would apply to all of our liquor license holders. So if we made the change, any liquor license holder then could stay open till at least 1:00 on July 3rd, and if they have a 2:00 AM license, they could stay open till 2:00 AM.
Okay. Do we know in this case if the fairs want to go to 1:00 or 2:00? John, can you? John, could you come?
Up the mic, please.
This came into play last year. We were unaware of the ordinance, being our first year of running something like that on July 3rd, so we kind of got surprised by the midnight ordinance. And, you know, every so many years, we are going to land on the Friday and Saturday nights, which isn't going to affect us any longer. But, at that point, the officer that came in and let us know about the ordinance said to approach the board and ask you guys for, because you guys already have in place for the night before Thanksgiving and for New Year's Eve regardless of what night they fall on, and we were just asking if we could add July 3rd being a holiday itself, you know, night before the 4th, to go ahead and have that. It's something that we're going to pursue, but never 2:00. We haven't got any plans for that. It's got to do with our dance. It's our big night at the fair. Usually, a lot of families and everybody enjoy the dance that we put on that night, so it's our late night of all the nights of the fair.
Now, you heard Aaron mention that when we change an ordinance, we have to recodify, and it costs us a great deal of money. I mean, is that something that?
At the fair, I mean, I can't speak on the behalf of the entire board at all, but I would be willing to venture that we'd be in agreeance of covering part of that. I could bring that to the board if that's what you're asking.
Well, yeah, because I mean, I understand you guys are, yeah, it's a cost for us, and you guys get to make hopefully some good money off of it.
That's the hope, is to fund more for the fair out with it, so.
Aaron, is that something we can do, is split the cost?
Sure, we can, yeah, you can figure out however you want to do that, that's fine. You know, we can share the cost with them, and whatever they're, you know, agreeable to paying, we could, you know, just invoice or however they want to do it. But, yeah, that's fine, we could do that.
We'd be absolutely willing to, you know, I'd just have to bring it to the next Monday's meeting, and I'm sure, you know, I can't make a decision for the board itself.
Well, right, I understand that.
I'm sure that with the dollar amounts that we'd be looking, you know, at helping out the fair, it'd be well within our reason to.
Because I found out this is quite spendy for us, actually.
Oh, yeah, I just found that out myself. So, yeah, absolutely, you know, we'd be more than willing to.
Yeah, because we don't want to deny you, but we want to cover at least some of our costs.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. If it's something that you guys would consider, I'm sure the board wouldn't have a problem with splitting costs on it, or if that's something that you guys would consider, so.
All right.
Any other discussion?
Can we get you to sign in, just to make sure we have it for the minutes?
So, are we making a decision tonight on this?
Yeah, if you want it to be effective for the fair this year, we have to make a decision tonight.
And you're pretty sure they would cover part of the costs?
I, I.
Yeah, I don't expect a guarantee or anything, but you're pretty sure.
Yes, yeah, I'm 99% sure.
Okay.
That, I mean, with the dollars that we're looking at, hopefully producing in revenue, it's going to be in our best interest to say yes to this.
Yep, and don't forget we'll have to have a second reading, so if in between tonight's first reading, if you approve it, and the second reading at the next meeting on the 19th, if the Fair Board doesn't agree to pay whatever you decide you want them to pay, you can just not approve the second reading, it won't go into effect then.
Well, we probably can't set an exact amount anyhow, because we'd not positively.
I would say a percentage would be the best way, if you want to split the cost of them, say 50%.
Yeah.
We won't know, it won't be more than the $750, I can't see that. It just depends on, it's a small change, but depending on where it lines up in the actual codebook, you may actually have to change two pages just because you added a sentence, it rolls over to the next page. So I wanted to try to, you know, make sure we were sort of aiming for the high end of it when we gave the estimate.
Well, in that case, I guess, yeah, if, I would make a motion to approve this with the added condition that we split the cost between the fair and the city for the recodification.
At 50%?
At 50%, yes.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hey, wait a minute, I wanted to ask Jeff, what's your thoughts on all this?
Very similar to Aaron, you know, as staff, my primary concern is that if we keep going at these piecemeal, you know, it has a tremendous cost on the city. We already staff for the fair. This amendment would, to our ordinance, would then have the potential to shift the fair patrons at 1:00 downtown, and we're just maintaining our staffing longer, you know, because of that. But, I don't think it's something that we wouldn't be able to handle, it's just something that I'll build into our staffing.
Okay.
Things we've had to do in the past, but when we went to the midnight, you know, then pretty much at midnight, everything is done. And we weren't concerned about staffing until 2:00 in the morning during the week. This will be just a change, and we're just accommodating.
All right, thank you, Robbie.
Is there any other discussion? Not, we have a motion by Bill, second by Merle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Bring us to item 7B, the MINDOT billing issue.
Okay, you know, we've obviously been talking about this for a long time, and in some of your past packets, I've included the whole long history of letters and responses and, you know, all those sort of things. So, you know, basically, I think we finally have gotten to the point where Greg and I have discussed as much as we can discuss with MINDOT, we don't think we're going to get any new, different, better answers. So, it really, I think, comes down to now the council deciding, where do we stand with this, what's kind of our final offer of settlement to get this resolved? I'll sort of, you know, just start with maybe the quick kind of history, and then I'll run through that last, well, the memo including the packet that kind of basically lays out where some of our issues are and addressing kind of where we stand on those after Greg has talked with their engineer, and, you know, we've kind of reviewed and things like that. But, you know, basically, the bill that the city got was for a little over $616,000. That was the original bill we received. At that point in time, when Greg and I finally started, you know, kind of digging into it and trying to figure out what's going on, we identified some areas of concern, questions we had, and MINDOT did come back and lower that bill down to where it currently is, the 572, 245, 20. So that's the current amount that we're at. After a lot of meetings, a lot of back and forth, you know, questions, things like that, we kind of did have it narrowed down to the items that are included on this May 26 memo from 2010. And I'll maybe try to quick run through those and just, you know, we can identify where Greg and I feel like we're probably stuck in ones where we have maybe some room to discuss. The first one was the rock excavation. Obviously, as you can see, those costs came in much higher than, you know, were anticipated by us. And maybe I should back up. One thing to understand is that the city knew we had a certain cost going into it, and we actually paid upfront 500, almost $510,000, we paid upfront to the project. We knew we had costs involved, we knew basically what our share would be, and we paid that upfront for the project, that $510,000.
Was that $510,000 stipulated as half payment or anything?
It was basically like 95% payment, really. It was pretty much everything that we anticipated we'd have to pay, based on the original plans for the project. There was a little bit left, which was just, well, basically, there was $40,000 left. And that was what the assumption, I think, was when the city closed out, maybe in there. But, what happened was, is that there were, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 8 work orders or change orders that were issued during the project, which were, according to MINDOT, all initiated by the city. So, from those change orders, if you use the anticipated amount that were in those change orders, the city would have expected to pay about another $275,000. You know, instead, we're at $572,000. So obviously, there's a big increase between what we signed on for and what we got. Now, as far as those change orders goes, this kind of goes to maybe some of the non-technical issues, where in looking through the records, the city council never approved any of those. They appear to be all field requests that were made at that time by city staff. I think that what we can tell from minutes was that city staff updated the council that, yes, we're doing some changes, we're adding some things, but it seemed to me that the expectation was maybe about $200,000-some thousand dollars more than what we had already paid, was expected. So, you know, we obviously have had some conversations with MINDOT about, you know, now, the common practice in what we do is when there are these change orders and things, they come to the council. The council approves them, then we sign off on them, then they go back, and, you know, they're approved. At that point in time, we had city staff signing, but we can't find the record that the city council really was overly involved. So, we had some issues there with the verification, but regardless, we expected, you know, with all those signed agreements, to pay about $275,000. That was the estimated cost. Now, obviously, that jumped up really significantly to the, well, $600 and some, but now down to that 572. And those areas are kind of laid out in this May 26, 2010 memo, where we talk about, here's what we signed, regardless of who signed, who authorized, whatever, here's what we expected, and here's what you actually gave us for a final cost, you know, why are these differences? So, getting back to the memo, the first item on there, A, was the rock excavation cost. We were anticipating to pay, you know, $13,000, and we ended up getting billed, you know, $146,000, so obviously, a big increase. Regardless of anticipated costs or not, you know, Greg has taken a look, and, I mean, yeah, that's basically probably right, that's how much it costs for rock excavation. Should it have been known or recognized early on? Regardless of that, even if the MINDOT didn't recognize it, probably city engineers should have recognized that that was going to be way too low for what we're presenting, but in looking, Greg and I probably feel that A is what it is. I mean, that was a legitimate cost, and we're going to be, it happened. It took that much rock excavation to get the work in that we requested, you know, that's a tough one to maybe get around. B is an item that's a little more loose, and I may even have Greg talk about this one a little bit, is these backseat adjustments. And basically, they're just sort of the catch-all to balance the project out at the end. So, you know, we anticipated this much, we had overruns here, there, wherever, and this balances all out. And we, you know, worked it out with the contractor, and here's where we finally end up with the bill. So, you know, we've got, you know, $95,000 in backseat adjustments that, you know, and maybe Greg, now, it'd be a good time just to, you know, what is that really with backsheets?
Well, like Aaron said, it's kind of the catch-all at the end. The MINDOT bid this in several schedules, some were 100% city work, some 100% MINDOT work, and not every schedule had the same quantities, but if they had encountered certain quantities in the field and had a price in one schedule, they would use that price in this other one, and then the backseat adjustments just kind of justify it all at the end so the numbers match. So if they had a price for a certain item in a certain part of the project, they'd go ahead and use that price up until 110% of the quantity, then the contractor got to ask for a new unit price. But that's what the backseat adjustments are. And each item in and of itself isn't a lot of money, but when you add them all up, it's $90-some thousand that they're saying is the city's share. Was this all done as part of it? Maybe, maybe not, but at the end of the day, this got them to balance their books at the end of the project, and it's hard to go back and say, well, we had five more days of this barricade, and there's 10 more feet of this pipe. It's hard to say. It's a gray enough one where you could ask a question, but MINDOT even said, well, this is the final backseat adjustments, and this is your share, you know, and to go weed through the entire stack on this project to verify every one of these would probably be almost impossible. So, like Aaron said, it's kind of a catch-all to justify the final numbers once they're all done, and then it's based on a percentage of the cost split for that part of the project. And in this one, it was the largest split of it was the city's. I know that's not very clear, but it is very clear.
So, what we're saying with that one is, is let's keep that one in question for discussion. The next item we talked about was just, well, there were manholes designed, there were some size differences. We felt that it was MINDOT's fault, MINDOT says, no, no, our engineer designed them. Who knows? But regardless, when Greg kind of reviewed that, he did find some discrepancy with what they charged us and what the actual unit costs were, and so unfortunately, with C, we think that maybe we can come up with, well, we actually have a good number, $5,361.98. And that's what Greg anticipates was misbuild pricing, well, you know, I guess it was based off of footage and what their bid price was and what they charged us was a little different. Now, you know, the big number, unfortunately, MINDOT says we designed it, it was our mistake. I can't, I have no idea, I don't know. But, so at least we did identify at least a pretty, you know, easily justifiable amount that was based off maybe some wrong numbers. So, there, we can probably, you know, save the $5,361.98, but anything more than that would be probably questionable at best. The next one, which was D, which was fittings for the water main work and other various locations, Greg still stands by this one, we don't understand why we needed the additional amount, so we think that we can also ask for the reduction of the full $21,648. So, basically, where that leaves us is, is, you know, we've got a little over $5,000 and a little over $21,000 in areas that we feel we can justifiably say that, you know, technically there were issues with this, and, you know, we can show that we feel the billing's incorrect and probably be able to, you know, get by with that. What we're left with then is this kind of larger number of the backseat adjustments of about $95,000. And, you know, what do we feel about those? Like Greg said, they, it all could be correct. I mean, that might be, that was, ended up being what it took to balance out the work. We requested all this work, this is our share of it, that's fine, but we also, we don't know for sure. Which, again, gets back to the whole original issue of waiting so long to start this process of closeout. It's basically impossible for us to go back and verify a lot of these things. So, with that said, I mean, if you take the two that we, you know, are feel very confident about, we would get that bill down to 545, 235, 22. Now, what that leaves us is, what do we do with this $95,000 in backseat adjustments? Do we accept it as is, if that's what happened? Do we say, no, we don't believe we should pay any of this? Do we say we should maybe split the difference since we don't know for sure, but quite possibly it could be right that we do half of it? But, you know, other than that, I mean, we're, if you get aside, if you get away from the issue of approvals and everything else, the work was done. Everything was signed. The city, in some form or another, knew that this stuff was happening. So, you know, Andrea at some point could probably speak on our obligations here or not, but, I mean, there's not much getting around it. We've been working for, you know, ever since I've gotten here, so, you know, over four years on trying to get this resolved. And when you've seen the big stack and the back and forth, and what's going on, and, you know, MINDOT's gone back and forth, and, you know, we are basically at the point now where MINDOT has nothing else to say to us. It sort of is what it is, we need to decide, what do we do with this to finalize it? So, I guess, you know, the only thing I would, you know, well, I guess, as far as number-wise, is what should we do with this $95,000, and then from there, you know, give the okay to make them an offer, I guess.
For those people at home, the MINDOT bill we're talking about is for work that was done back in 2001 for a project on Highway 19 when they changed the corner over there, so, just so it's not nothing that's new, it's something that's popped up on the city about three or four years ago, and so we're trying to settle that tonight, so just so folks at home know that.
We actually, I think, received the first bill in July of 2007, it looks like.
Right, yeah.
That's the first time we got it.
And the project technically closed out in 2001, was pretty much substantially completed at the end of 2001. Might have had some work into 2002, but not much.
So if we were to pay half, I mean, we would end up basically being down to about $500,000 that we.
Yep. If we would split that backseat adjustment, we'd be basically down, well, we would be down to 497, 719, 61.
I'd like to hear from Andrea on this.
Certainly. You start with your contract, and your contract provides what the city's responsibilities are. If there were errors made, while that might factor into what the city might owe, what a court would do is look at, was there a benefit? Did the work have to get done anyway? Did the city know the work was getting done even if they maybe didn't officially sign off? And ultimately, a court, if those things come out to, yes, there was a benefit, yes, the work had to get done as part of the project, yes, people in the city, city staff, council knew that that work was being done, you're likely going to lose on those issues. And I think Aaron's spoken to most of those issues where you're probably ultimately going to be liable on those dollar figures where they can show the work needs to be done, particularly in areas where there's going to be some question about whether or not it was the city or engineer, or county, MINDOT engineer who designed something that may have been inaccurate. But with respect to the rest, I think that boils down to, he said, she said, in terms of that, the backstreets, backseat adjustments. I think you can argue over that till kingdom come.
Is that possible to separate the backsheet from the rest of the bill? And you're recommending we pay what, 3, to offer 337, right?
No, no.
No, no.
What do you recommend?
Oh, no, we moved on from that memo. That was in 2010, don't forget, so.
Okay, what do you recommend?
That included that A, which was a big number, that rock excavation number. That was our major, really, area that, you know, like I said, we, I think we're stuck. You know, I think right now, like the mayor said, I mean, if we looked at that backseat adjustment and said, well, cut it in half, we'll say we'll offer you 50% of it. We understand that, yes, some of it's probably ours, but we don't feel comfortable saying all of it's ours. We don't think you can verify all of it's ours, we'd like to say that, you know, we'd offer you the half of it. And if we did that, if we took into account the, you know, what we talked about with the 21, 648, and the 5,361, 98, as, you know, kind of those two numbers were, you know, with Greg looking at it, we feel that are definitely justifiable reductions. If you add that $47,000 on there, basically, our bill would be, or what we'd be offering for settlement is 497, 719, 61.
Andrea, what happens if we make an offer, and MINDOT just says, no, we want the whole thing? What's our course of action?
You can sit back and do nothing. They're not going to sue you, unlikely, but is it going to make future projects with MINDOT, and the benefits that you can get from MINDOT's on projects more difficult in the future? Possibly. Becomes more of a political question, I think, than anything else. Becomes more of a political question, I think, than anything else.
Hey, Aaron, you, we've got three numbers out there. We start out at $572, and I understood that's what MINDOT wanted. And then I thought we adjusted it to 54, 5 something, and now we're at 49 something. I'm getting all kinds of numbers thrown around here, I kind of mixed it up.
Oh, yeah. Well, don't forget the $600,000 number too, that was what it originally was.
I thought it was like 680 actually when we started.
I don't think it was quite that high. I think it was at 616, almost six, yeah, about 616 exactly. So anyways, started at 616 after we reviewed and actually we had some rock numbers and stuff. And I think that's what we got them to go down on originally was rock. That dropped it down to the current number, which is at 572, 245.20. Greg, after reviewing everything, Greg feels comfortable with the reduction of $21,648 from that work order number five, which would be item D.
But have they agreed to that now or is that just what we talked about?
This is just what we're talking about. They haven't agreed to anything, yeah.
But they've agreed to the 572 though?
Oh, yeah. That's what the bill's at now. That's where they're at. So anyways, if you take off that $21,648 for work order five and then the $5,361.98 for work order one, which was item C, we're down to $545,235.22. Then if you take off half of that back sheet adjustment, which is about $47,000, a little bit more, that gets us down to that number that we were just discussing, which is the $497,719.61. You know, bottom line is, I don't know what MINDOT's going to say about any of this.
So we're equivalent over probably 143,000? No, actually, 170,000.
Yeah.
And the people that signed off, that supposedly signed off, were they directors like at Public Works? Or was it just employees or the people that signed off?
Yeah, it was city employees and city consultants. Yep.
Were they authorized to sign off on these projects?
I would assume so, they did. But again, the hard part for me is, is I can't look back and say with any certainty what happened because it's not reflected in the minutes. We're not seeing in the minutes where the council, you know, gave explicit approval for all these different work orders and things like that. But they were signed and so the assumption is if, you know, and I think Andrea would have to say, the assumption is if city representatives are signing, they're authorized to sign.
So let's take the 572 and let's say that we're going to quit this arguing, get it settled and we're going to get it done with. Where is 572 coming out of the budget or what are we going to do with it? Do we get a levy, levy for it or we get a bond for it?
Well, you know, what's going to happen is, is the only way that we can really do this is that now that MINDOT has said that we don't have to pay our full $2 million share upfront for the interchange project, they're just going to charge us for phase one of the interchange portion, not phase two of the overpass. Our estimated cost, you know, and that could be adjusted when bids come in, things like that, but our estimated cost for phase one is 1.4 million.
Except for the fact, hey, we are paying Lasker, we're also not getting the bridge over there too, so...
Someday, when that bridge comes in, we will have to pay that.
Yeah, I don't know if that's necessarily a good thing, you know?
Right. So it's not that that obligation goes away, we just don't know for sure when we'll have that now.
Okay.
So we will have, we have $2 million set aside now, a million in general fund reserves and a million in TIF. Okay, the general fund reserves is there. About half the TIF is there, but we have two years left in that TIF and we have it not going anywhere else but into the fund to pay for this. So it's going to be there. So we will have the full amount there within the next couple of years. So with us having, if it all holds steady and we pay 1.4 million for the interchange portion, we will have 600,000 left over that we intended to use to pay for the overpass portion, but we won't be now. So it would have to go towards this because otherwise we would have to ask MINDOT somehow to, you know, let us pay it off over an extended period of years or something like that because it would pretty much be impossible to levy this in one year.
Well, I was wondering about that. If it took him six and a half years to bill it, why couldn't we have three years to pay it back?
Well, we're going to have to have an extension to pay it back just for the fact that, you know, we have some of the money on hand now, but, you know, we're expecting almost this full amount to come in in TIF over the next two years. So, you know, we won't have it now. We'll, we have to wait till the end of 2013 when that, when we'll have the, all the money in to cover everything. So we would have to ask for some sort of two-year sort of payment or whatever on it.
What about, as part of that interchange program, MINDOT's going to have to buy some land from us?
That's true.
That we might be able to use...
Yep, depending on what that cost is, I mean, we discussed, it can go help towards this, it can help towards the library overrun, it can help towards 318th Street when we decide we have to pay for that. I mean, the hard part is, is we've been discussing all these numbers, but we have some numbers out there that we don't know for sure yet. I mean, we're going to have to do some utility work when the interchange goes in. We're not going to extend a lot of utilities out there, but we do have to still put in some casings. We'll have to do some minor extensions of utilities just to, you know, get them in the road before the road goes in. It doesn't make sense to not extend them now and then have to tear the road up in, you know, X number of years to put them in. So we'll have some costs there. It won't be a huge cost, but, you know, maybe 200 some thousand dollars that we'd be looking at for something like that. 318th Street, we have no idea what that cost could be yet. And that's if, and we decide to improve that or not. But the hospital's, I'm sure, going to request that we improve it since it's going to be one of their main access points, you know, to get to the new facility. So there's a cost that we don't know yet. I mean, we've got these different costs that are floating around out there, but, you know, we just can't predict all of them right now. So then when they come up, that's when the council has to prioritize and decide, okay, what do we do? What, you know, what projects can we afford, what can't we afford? The issue with this one is we know it's there, it's been there for a while, we've been trying to resolve it forever. You know, and at some point we do need to have some sort of resolution with it and get it out of the way.
They've settled on other land out there though, I've heard.
Some, not much though.
Yeah, but I mean, is that kind of normal to, you'd think they'd settle on all of it, know exactly where they're at.
Worst case scenario, they're going to start the project without being settled on the land and they'll have to condemn. They do that too. They're behind and that's because they're short-staffed and they've been having all their staff at Elk Run. So that's backing them up. But they've assured us that it's on schedule still and that one way or the other, it will, you know, they'll meet the deadlines required and get ground and get construction going.
So it's the opinion of Greg and the rest of the staff that this $497 and change is a reasonable...
Well, that's, you know, it's potentially reasonable, but we are including these back sheet adjustments that they, you know, they guarantee are ours. We say, well, we don't know. The $545 number, we feel very, very comfortable with that that is easily justifiable, you know, we can do that. Now, these back sheet adjustments, that's where it gets questionable with that extra $50,000.
But isn't that, and Andrea, maybe you can address that better, the back sheet adjustments? You know, that is more of a he said, she said situation there, is it not?
Yeah, it would be up to them to establish it, but that would be based in part on your contract.
I mean, I think the $545 number, you would assume MINDOT would take. The $497 number, I don't know. I mean, I can't guarantee either. I would assume the $545 they would, well, you would hope they would. $497, I would also hope they would take that as well just to get this closed out because of all these questions and issues and problems and delay and everything else. So my recommendation would be the $497 number, yes. And if something comes back different, we'll be back again and discuss it.
Pay them even 500,000 and be done with it.
So you think that we should offer $497?
Well, it's a justifiable number. We're basing it off facts, you know, we're showing them why we've come up with this and we're going to tell them, you know, with this back sheet adjustment, we feel that there's questions and we think splitting it in half would be the fair way to settle it.
Even though there were mistakes on both sides and it's muddy right now after all these years?
Yeah, definitely is muddy.
What, have you ever had any case like this before in any year? Anything like this before that you've been involved in?
Not that's come that long, that late after a project, that's...
The time element is something to be considered on this.
Absolutely. I think that adds into Aaron's justification for splitting that 90-some thousand dollar figure.
And that's what I think too. They, for dragging this on for six years after the fact before it's brought to us and almost another five years of trying to iron out the differences, I think that's the least they owe us.
So what your plan is to, if we okay this, to offer this to them and see what they say about it?
Their engineer called today and it's reminding us tonight, so he'll call me tomorrow, I'm sure. They must be getting pressure from somewhere because as you can see with our past history in this, it would just, it would, they would have interest, we'd ask questions, it would literally die for a year before we get any sort of response from them. And now more recently, it's been a big push. And, you know, I think Robbie and Bill can attest to that, having sat in a meeting with them, that it was, you know, very aggressive on their part of our responsibility and our problems. So somebody is pushing them on this, how that's working, I don't know. But yeah, they want to get it done and I don't think it'll be a year to get a response anymore.
If there's no other discussion then, Chair will take a motion to approve the $497,719.61 offer.
And I'll second that.
Any other discussion on this?
I'm just kind of curious from our attorney. If we took and decided ourselves up here, let's just try to settle us for 500,000. And we took a check for 250,000, you wrote up some kind of a contract. And you divided the other 250 over two years and said we'll pay 125 each year until it's paid up. And you just forwarded that under contingency that once it's signed, that's what is agreed upon and done with. And they cashed that check and agreed upon that, wouldn't we be done with this? I mean, would that be worth trying or is that just don't make any sense?
I don't think that either way it's going to change their mind. I mean, ultimately, that's what you'll end up doing if they agree to this dollar figure. But I don't think, like a private entity, if you send over a check and say, this is full and final payment, that that is going to influence that one way or another. Not from a government-to-government entity. I think you're better off with Aaron's shooting the dollar figure back to them and getting an agreement and then moving forward with it.
The part I don't like is that they keep coming back and then something gets said and then it lays there for six months again. So we got this hanging over us all the time. Is there some way to put a deadline on this and say, you know, we're done negotiating, we can't get any farther and it just reach some kind of an agreement? And then the other agreement would be is if we got to do it all upfront or if we could make it over a two or three-year payment on the thing, how do we get to that step instead of this back and forth stuff?
Well, I mean, it's really up to them. I mean, we can't force them to respond and we can't, you know, force them to make decisions quickly. But like I said, with the activity recently, it seems that they're very interested in getting this done with. So I don't think it's going to be an extended time for an answer anymore. It could be quick. But if it is, you know, once again, we're stuck. And that's been the issue in the past is that we respond, but we can't force them to answer and, you know, there's not much we can do.
I think your offer is fair. If you make the offer, if they don't accept it, just let it go and that's, then they don't get anything, period. I wouldn't be in favor of further negotiation. I think this is a fair offer. And they have to understand something else too. By asking for this all at once like they are and the amount of the bill, they're putting a pressure on us too. It's not just pressure on them, it's pressure on us and our budget. We do budgets ahead of time, we got to know what we're going to spend. They understand the taxpayers in this, in this city are getting less and less government aid, uh, state aid from the LGA. I mean, it goes both ways. So I think a fair offer is a fair offer. If they don't accept it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bother negotiating with them any further.
Okay, we have a motion on the table by Merle and second by Bill to approve offering the $497,719.61 to settle this MINDOT bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary. That's one bill that I'd be glad to get off the, because it's been hanging around too doggone long. Okay, that brings us to item 7C, which is Resolution 1965, the conditional use permit application for Chuggers.
I brought that down. I was, I had a request from one of the neighbors of Chuggers to bring this down so that he could voice some concerns. But before we get to Gary, my concern, because I see the gentleman from Chuggers is here. One concern I have is, as I understand the law, you're only able to enter through the front and leave. You can leave through the back, but you can't come in through the back. How are you going to enforce that? Would be my question. If you would come up, sir. And if you could sign in, please.
If I can enforce it, please.
How are we going to enforce? Nobody coming up the back? I'd like to know why we can't have anybody come up the back. As I understand it, the law will not allow... Jeff, could you explain that?
The outside dining requires entry through the primary licensed premises by city code.
Right.
Yep.
So that brings me back to my original question. How will you control people just walking up the back stairs?
We would have to gate it and put signs up, exit only, not an entrance. I'm there quite a bit, as a lot of people in town know, especially on the weekends when it's real busy. My job is to be there, control things as much as possible, my son and I. I am there 99% of the time on the weekends when it's real busy. During the week, we'd have certain hours that it would be open, certain hours we'd have it closed. So we wouldn't have to worry about policing it if you would. The weekends, I would be there. My son and I would be there. I would, if I can't be there, I'd hire somebody to be there to make sure that it's, that it's operable the way it should be.
And then you would, as I understand it also, you have to have an employee out there when that's open, serving?
Correct, right.
Food, okay.
Right.
All right. Okay, thanks. Gary, I know you wanted to, you had some concerns.
Yeah, I'm Gary Turnier, 224 Wood Ridge Drive, Cannon Falls. I have the property that's immediately right next to Chuggers, it's the old Lindell property. My concern is, is that the, we already have some issues and I don't want to have any additional issues. And I don't have a problem with the project itself. It's just that I think with this increased business, a lot of the customers park in the city lot that's, which is next to mine, which causes them to walk behind my building. And if they naturally park back there, they're going to want to go in that back door. And I think there's just going to be some confusion in that matter. And I'm already, if I go on Sunday morning, I make the rounds, that's when I find the busted beer bottles, the vomit, the cigarette butts, the whatever. And, you know, obviously Saturday night's a busy night. So I just have a concern with the controlling the patrons, the whole environment, and I just don't want it to... I just don't want it to, you know, blow into some big, big deal here, so I thought maybe we could just kind of deal with it now. But I, I don't have a problem with the project.
You, you do understand that once the patrons leave the Chuggers property, you know, it is beyond the ownership's control if they're throwing garbage or?
I understand that part, but they are carrying drinks out and bottles out, you know, beer bottles and drinks. That's what we're finding, you know, I mean, so they're coming out, they're leaving with the bar, out of the bar with these drinks and bottles of beer, with beer and stuff in them, so that's, that's the problem that we have.
Is that up front? Do you have that problem or mostly in back?
It's in back. You'll find some alongside, there's that fence there, you know, the city lots there, I mean, you'll find some on that hill there. But, you know, a lot of it's in the back. You know, I've talked to, you know, Tom with the city, he's told me to, because they have to, they have to mow that, they have to maintain that. You know, he's had the same issue, too. But I just, you know, if we could just get a little cooperation and with the owner there and maybe work together, I think that would be good.
Do you try to work together?
He's going, I mean, right now, I mean, with the, the deck, you're gonna have somebody out there, so basically, you'll be stopping them from, I mean, it's gonna help it, the situation, right? Or am I wrong? I don't know.
I mean, the exit, the exit portion of it is, is for emergencies only, is that not correct, Jeff? I mean, to exit, you still have to exit out the?
This is city code?
Yes, our city ordinance allows alcohol in outdoor dining. I didn't bring a copy of it with me, but it does require them to enter through the primary businesses, premises, so you can't, you wouldn't walk in, specifically in Denny's situation, you wouldn't be able to walk up the, the back entrance to the bar to be served. You would have to come in through the, the entrance off of Forest Street.
But they can exit?
Then they could go onto the bar in the, on the deck, through that business. And in theory, if Denny wanted to allow that as a regular aggress from the business, that would be permitted.
Yep. You can, you have to allow them to be able to exit off of that. We don't have any restrictions on that. So, what would have to be then is any staffing involved, would have to be watching. But they should be watching now, leaving that back door, but with somebody out there, it should help that by having somebody on there at all times watching, but making sure that nobody brings anything out with them. And that, that actually should maybe be an improvement with having somebody have to be on that deck, you know, when they're operating out there.
And I, and I understand that. Some of the things that have been done in the past, I mean, because there were some other establishments that had that and we've talked, we've talked with them and, and one of the things they did was to make sure that at night, you know, before they closed, I mean, they went and started picking stuff up and, and stuff like that, and it might be something that, that you guys may have to put in place that at the end of the night, you mean, yeah, you stop as many people as possible, and I know you try, I mean, and, and, you know, especially in the wintertime when people put things under a coat and they walk out, you can't control everything. But, I mean, policing it either that night or early in the next morning, I mean, I, I think it would be a big step into what Gary's trying to get accomplished, so we don't have that stuff sitting out there and around his property. I can't control, you know, somebody that goes out there and upchucks, I mean, you can't, you can't really control that, but, still, I mean, I think if you worked, I mean, working together, I think we can get this whole thing resolved to where, you know, both parties are happy in this, in this, so, I mean, I think it's just working together, I mean, two businesses, two adults, you know, trying to figure out the right way to make this work, so that, you know, we don't have that problem. I mean, because, I mean, if you look at it, it's gonna be a real nice addition to, you know, two Chuggers having that outdoor dining. I know I like to sit outside and eat a lot of times, I mean, although, you know, sometimes you wish you had a better view than the post office, but still, I mean, you've got, you do, you do have to work together to try to get this resolved, I mean, because, I mean, you can't, just can't keep going on to where we get these type of complaints on that kind of stuff from different businesses, so, I mean, and I know you'll work on it, I mean.
I've tried to do a lot since I've taken over Chuggers in the last year and a half or better. I put cameras in, it cost me $6,000 to patrol things, to police things. You know, the old saying is you can't fix stupid, and you can't, you just can't. People are who they are, they're gonna do what they do, whether you police the 24/7s. You can't be there every day, every night. You're, you're only hoping that the people in the community are good people, they use their heads when they go out. I tell kids, if you can't behave yourself when you're in here, watch your language, have respect for the elderly, have respect for the kids, have the respect for the women, have respect for yourself. Watch in the environment, look around when you're talking, you know, who are you talking with or who's, who might be behind you. I stop people all the time and I'll say, "Hey, hey, boys, lose the effing hammers." You know, if you want to talk that way, go somewhere else. I, and people, they respect me for it. You know, I, I come in in the morning to clean most of the week. I have a brother of mine that cleans on the weekends and he's as cleaner, cleaner I am, but that's, and that's hard to believe. In the wintertime, I'll go over and, while I'm, while I'm sweeping or shoveling snow, I'll go over and do Gary's, as he's probably seen. I do the people next door to us, Bob, Cornell. I like being outside, I figure as long as I got my broom in my hand or I have a shovel in my hand, why not, why not keep doing it? It makes me feel good. And I'm thinking if I'm out and about someday or something happens and I'm not around, maybe why they're out doing theirs, maybe, maybe do mine. I sweep up cigarette butts almost every day. I went out there today and cleaned them all up. I know there's beer bottles out on the side, I jumped a fence just the other day, went along Gary's wall, picked up two or three beer bottles. I can't say it's all my business, we have another bar across the street. We have kids that drink, people that go by and throw things, I've seen them before. I've even yelled at them, tried to get a license number, can't. It's either too dark or they're moving too fast. I'm not a sloppy person, I'm not a messy person, I care about the community, I care about, about the people that come to my establishment. We're gonna have it policed, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of that deck. I mean, it looks a thousand times better than it used to. I know a few members on the council and, and people here have been in my establishment coming up the back way. It used to be trashy, dirty, it looked like hell. We cleaned it up, I've spent tens of thousands of dollars on that deck to make it look nice so we can have a nice environment, have a nice place for everybody to go. I'm willing to work with Gary and do as much as I can. I know he stopped me before and told me about the, you know, yep, chucking and, and all this and that, and again, Gary, I'm sorry someone did it on your, in your little space. When they come out of my establishment, maybe it's a place to go and hide to do it because they're embarrassed of their friends. And when they're done, they come back in my establishment. I can't control that. I thought about putting cameras outside, I'm putting one on the deck so I can see everybody enter or exit if we could. I'm putting one down below underneath so I can people see coming, people coming and going. All my deliveries, everything. I can only do so much.
But you're gonna have somebody out there on the deck?
I will be out there, I'll be out there, someone will always be out there all the time. I'm not putting a bar out there. I've talked to other people, I've been around, my builder, Bob Emick, and I have been around in the last month or so and talked to a lot of different places that do have alcohol, that do serve alcohol on the deck. I elected not to. I'm not gonna put a bar out there, I'm gonna just have somebody serve food, serve drinks, no, no glass out there whatsoever, it's gonna be all plastic. I just changed the way we were gonna do things out there. The more I thought about it, the more protective I thought it would be for everybody. We'll put a big splash guard up over our deck, on our bar, if you will, outside around the perimeter of the deck. I see anybody flipping cigarettes over there, you're out of here. It's strike one and you're out.
And you're gonna put lights on the stairs?
We're putting lights on the stairs, we're having lights all over in the ceiling, we put ceiling fans out there, we got a couple of nice TVs we're putting out there. We're gonna make it real nice for people that are gonna really appreciate it and enjoy it.
Spend a lot of dough out there on that.
Spend a lot of money on it.
Yeah, I know.
That's what I'm thinking. It is a city lot next to Gary, and I know a lot of people park down there. People that have already come up on our deck and said, "Denny, this is the greatest thing since apple pie and Chevrolet," let's say, you know. And I'm telling people already, it might be possible, we can't use this as an entrance, just an exit, and they go, "Denny, come on, man, you're killing me." It's not my decision. I guess that's the way it is.
Well, that's just the law.
They think it's as foolish as I think it is. I've never been at a deck in my life that I can't enter or exit.
It's a city code.
City code or whatever it is, maybe needs to be changed, maybe needs to be something to be looked at. I just, I just think it's unfair. I think it'll hurt my business a lot. I myself, I know, and you and I have had this discussion before, Phil. Would you like to be sitting on my deck and say, "Well, I'm gonna go over to the store and then come back and I'll have a drink or whatever," but I have to walk all the way around in order to come back out where you want to be on that deck? I know, I don't want to. I park back there, that's my parking spot. It's been my parking spot, Roy Warner's parking spot, other owners' parking spots for years and years and years. The little deck we used to have out there was a six-by-six. They ate out there, they were allowed to bring their drink out there, for what, two people? But now because we can put 20 or 25 out there, they're saying, "You can't, you can't use that as a, as an entrance." Don't make any sense to me. Whoever voted that and or whatever made up that law, I just think, you know, there's something wrong. They're, they're not a businessman, they, they don't, if they were to own my establishment, they'd, they'd see where I'm coming from.
Gary, does that, does that answer at least some of your concerns?
I would, so are you gonna install cameras out there then?
Yes, I am. In fact, I called ADT today, they're coming tomorrow at 1:30 if you want to come over and check it out. I'm gonna have one upstairs, I'm gonna have one down below.
And then you're gonna, patrons will be able to smoke out there, right?
Exactly, right.
You had to have that, that's gotta be 50% open with the building code. You're familiar with that, right?
Everything's up to coin.
I can, I can live with that.
Okay.
And, and I?
And I promised already, I promised already to the, to the gentleman next door, Bob, Cornell, that, that, that pretty much sold me 200 and maybe 40 square feet to make our deck a little bit bigger. We promised him and the gentleman next door that owns the, the dentistry, that this is gonna be really nice, it's gonna make everybody's building look real nice back there, enhance everything, we're gonna keep everything nice and clean. These two gentlemen have already said, "Denny, this has been a remarkable change."
Well, the deck is, the deck is very nice. I mean, I've looked at it.
They drive by and they, they can't believe how clean it is, how neat it is, how we cleaned it up, and we still have a lot to do.
How many people do you think you'll want to seat out there then?
About 26, I think the max. And I'm gonna tell people, "You come out here to sit out here, you have to sit down." I don't want somebody sitting and having dinner, and someone maybe like Gary and I stand and they're having a beer, chumming around and smoking a cigarette, flipping ashes with the wind blowing and going in somebody's food. I don't want that. I want everybody to sit down, if they smoke, have an ashtray, to watch TV, to do what they want to do. I don't want 30 people out there standing there, smoking cigarettes and flipping ashes and going in somebody's food or in their drinks. That won't be allowed.
And you have plans there to put something down in the winter and even keep it, keep it open in the winter?
We have, for security.
For security?
For anybody that wouldn't want to try to come up those back stairs. We have like bifold doors, like steel or, or clear, some kind of plastic, a real hard plastic, where it's like a hur, it's a hurricane door, where we can take it remotely and shut them at night and lock them, that goes over our stairs. So nobody can come up that back way and screw with our TVs or, or steal our chairs or throw anything off the deck. It's gonna be all enclosed every night.
Okay.
And when we open in the morning or afternoon, whenever we decide to open it, we hit the button, the gates roll up and ready for business.
You know, you, you've kind of sold us on the idea that you're doing, gonna try to do the best you can to be a good neighbor down there. Every bar has its problems. Whether it's Rooster's over there with bottles and stuff along the bank, and you got them along the back. The biggest thing is, is that, I don't know what the answer would be, you know more than I do, you're in that business, but I would think the barrel at a, at the bottom of the steps that says absolutely no bottles beyond this point, hopefully they drop them in there before they leave. And one of your staff does a walkthrough on that back area every night after you close up. I, I think that's all we can expect, because when people do crazy things, especially when there's alcohol mixing, crazy things happen, we understand that. So, you know, what, what we're basically saying is, and if you want to change that and you would like to make that an entrance, I can see your point, because the nice thing would be is if we had a stairway from the, that blank parking lot down there up to the front.
Right.
That would make it a lot nicer, people could park there, go up the stairway, go in the front and then leave again and come out. But we don't have that, so I understand that. If you did want to change that and try to do something different there, come down and see Aaron and pitch your case and, and Aaron will run it by committees here, and we'll see where it goes. Can't guarantee you either way on that. But for right now, it, it has to follow the rules that we got. So we appreciate all the good work you're doing, we appreciate your efforts. We also understand it's a bar, and also, you guys have to meet all the standards or there's fines involved, and that's just the way it is. And if we, whatever you can do to help keep the neighbor happy, the city will really appreciate it.
And that I will do. I've been trying to do that and I think Gary notices that, we sweep up the cigarette butts. I go around the side of, at least a few times a week, my, my builder Bobby Emick, he is even, now he's my carpenter, he has even picked bottles up on the side over there. Instead, Denny, I kind of cleaned up the area over there to keep Gary happy. I totally appreciate that. He's the kind of people we want in our community, not the ones that destroy things and beat the hell out of everything. We want people that can take care of things and appreciate, you know, what everybody's trying to do. And...
No, I'm, I think you, you know, you're a businessman, you put a lot of money into the town, you bought a house here, you built, you bought a business here. And of course, Gary, contribution he's made is obvious to everybody in town, you're a large contributions he's made. So I'm glad you could get together on this and have a reconciliation or a compromise.
Great town, Phil, that's why we...
Oh, thank you.
That's why we're here. If we didn't like it, we wouldn't be here.
That's good.
Keith?
I even tell my employees, I tell my customers, you know, I have a liquor license, not a daycare license. I can't take care of everybody.
That's right.
I can't be here 24/7s, nobody can.
No, I think we understand that.
You know, maybe as parents, they teach their kids a little bit better and hope that they turn out to be decent citizens, if not, Mr. McCormick takes care of that.
That's right.
Keith?
Yep, I was just gonna add, there were, you know, a couple of points that went back and forth between Council and, and Denny. And I just wanted to touch on them. You know, the, the Council has made a, a note under the Police Department that the, you know, open containers leaving the businesses were a priority for them. We've worked with one of the other establishments that seemed to have a problem on that. We have seen a reduction, this spring we have seen an increase again. My officers are citing people for it, but I put a caveat on our enforcement, which is if they run back into the bar, we're not chasing them into the bar to try to drag them out to give them a ticket. It just, it creates more potential for, for complications for us. So I want the Council aware, it's not that we're, we're not enforcing it, it's just when they pull up, park the squad and get out, a lot of times these people disappear back into the establishment. You know, the, the bottles that may leave empty are just that, trash empty bottles. The containers leaving full, the businesses have been advised, the liquor license holders, technically, that becomes a violation of their license. They have an on-sale premise license only. When the alcohol leaves their establishment, they're in violation because it is now an off-sale that has occurred. So their license is at risk, they have a very vested interest in ensuring that as much as possible is controlled. And ultimately, the Council has the ability to hold them fully responsible for all their exits and containers that may leave. That'll be up to the Council's actions and we would carry forward that direction. But we have seen some increases in it and we are working to try to reduce it and the impact that it has on the other businesses.
Jeff, I just might add, maybe send a memo just to those establishments, just to remind them, hey, spring's here, people are gonna want to stand outside more and, and monitor that so we don't have the trash on the streets early in the morning, you know, like we had before, just, just as a basic reminder, I mean, even though it wasn't a real hard winter, it was a long winter, and now it's heating up outside, people are wanting to be outside.
Yep, I certainly can, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, it's not just our businesses there that are licensed. We tend, when we do those, we send them out to all of our licensed establishments. We don't want a single one individual.
Right, right.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1965.
I'll second.
I have a motion on the floor by Bill, seconded by Merle, to approve Resolution 1965. Is there any further discussion? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Gary's.
Yeah, thank you guys for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Hey Robbie, just a quick thing for Jeff pertaining to that. Do we ever put out like a piece of literature or some kind of a pamphlet with the rules expected out of patrons in Cannon Falls or something? You know, in construction, we got these safety rules we hang on the wall, what's expected to everybody. Does Police Department ever put out something like that, that they actually hang in the bar?
No, those, that's really the responsibility of the licensee. Their, their license is at risk, not, it's not, it's not a responsibility for us. It's actually their responsibility.
But it would be a good thing in this particular situation to have something out on the deck for the owner. So if we don't do that, you know, it probably should be suggested that the rules should be posted on the deck, what is the expectation?
We, we have worked with one establishment that had some, large number of issues. And we recommended signage and they did put signage up, and that seemed to impact it for a little while. You know, as, as, you know, Denny indicated, you know, you, you can't control the behavior entirely of your patrons. And when alcohol's involved, decisions aren't always the best. But, they've worked to, yep, signs have worked in the past, so it is something that we can put in that memo as a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming in. Thanks for all you guys have done for, for the city. At this point, we'll move on to item 70, which is a twin city container sewer billing request.
Yes, Aaron, I understand why they are requesting what they're requesting. I understand the procedures that they're going through. But I just wondered how much money that will leave the city less taking, taking in.
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit. It's a pretty small amount. I mean, it's, for, for us, on our end, it doesn't add up to a lot. It's on their end, in operational costs, that's where they, you know, they'll see their obvious savings, but not into it. But it, it won't have a major impact. I mean, we can't say, you know, 100% for sure because it's, you know, it's gonna depend a little bit on those meter readings and things. We haven't done it yet, but it's not something where, say, we'd have to adjust rates to offset it or anything. I mean, it would fall within such a small percentage overall that we won't see an impact.
This doesn't have anything to do with the storm sewer thing or the storm water?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's fine.
Any further discussion on this? If not, the chair will take a motion to allow twin city container to be built for the sewer portion of this operation based on the discharge meter, not their water meter.
Make a motion we do that?
A motion by Phil.
I'll second.
Second by Merle. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carrie's. And that brings us to item 70, the presidential visit marker.
Yes, I love that. Is that, is that a high priority project here? I mean, but, I mean, why is that, I mean, Calvin Coolidge spoke at Hoville in 1928. For people who graduate from public school, that's 84 years ago. But that's, that was, nothing was put up when he did that and I don't know why a campaign stop should be, you'd have to put something up for that.
We've had the requests that, when, we get a lot of our downtown business owners, our chamber, that have said that they have people coming in, where did the president speak, you know, where would this be, that sort of things. I mean, yes, will, will it last for, you know, ever?
Well-
You know, debatable, but, you know, at the same time, it obviously was, you know, at least in relative history, you know, a big event for Cannon Falls.
Recent history, yes, but it's gonna be used as a squirrel's bathroom pretty soon, another five years from now. Look, here's another thing. That money, you know, why don't we, why don't we designate our new library, the site of our new libraries, a public park, about half an acre and then use that money for landscaping on it. We can call it Barack Obama Park if you'd like.
We, well, I'm not sure if we'll get away with using park dedication.
You could do it. You could do it, actually.
I'm not sure that would work quite out. And we have actually Andrea here, that helps, but I, I don't think that one would fly so well, unfortunately. I mean, it, like I said, it, it's something that's been discussed. It, well, the Public Works Commission did review it. And, you know, again, it's, like you said, whether recent history or relative to overall history where, where this will fall into, it was still a very major event and it was thought to commemorate.
He's the green president. If, if they put a marker over every spot he makes a campaign speech at, the whole, half the country would be under tile and marble by the end of the campaign.
I mean, that's, that's, that's your opinion on this and we'll just-
Thank you. I'm glad you recognize that, Mr. Mayor.
But, I mean, we're not talking, we're just talking about the marker. I mean, we're not talking about the other portion of it.
Wonderful, but I'm just saying, I don't, I'd rather use the money for something else.
Okay. With that, the, is there any other discussion? Not the chair, take a motion to approve the presidential visit marker as presented and recommended by Public Works.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Leroy, second by Merle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Nay.
Approve.
Now it's your turn.
All right, let's move this on to item 7F, the tower lease request.
What is that for? The wifi thing, is that?
It's, it would be a competitive wireless or competitive internet service provider. So, you know, right now you can get your internet through, say, phone company and DSL, through your cable company and a cable modem. This is a wireless option. So you can, they, they will offer internet service to residents, business, you know, those sort of things. So it's, it's another business renting on our, yep. It's another business renting on our tower. You know, we have leased up there with Verizon Wireless, I'm not sure who else, but, you know, we have other antennas on there that we, that we lease to.
I know, but I seen we got, we get what, five connections or something?
Yep, yep.
And that's what we're getting for this lease?
Yep, and, you know, generally speaking, a lease like this is not as big as, say, a cellphone lease. So I think on average, what they've been paying in other communities that they're in, $50 a month, you know, somewhere in there. They, they just, it's not a big antenna. It's not-
But I think the five hookups are worth more than the $50 a month.
Yep, and it, it's better, it's better off for us than gaining money.
So where would the, do we know where we put the five hotspots?
Right now, the, the two that we're, we're fairly sure on is that the new trailhead there, we've had requests and then also the pool.
And then how about, how long a lease is this for? One year at a time?
Yeah, we'll, we'll renew it up.
Renew it every year?
Yep.
And the other thing I think we should be aware of, the way this stuff is going is, and it probably something that Tom should address from Public Works, but electrolysis is getting to be a real big problem. And, and I think that should be talked about to these people. If we ever start having electrolysis problem on the tank up there itself, what happens is you get a million volt, stray voltage coming off these things that actually reacts with the metal on the tank and pits it. So I'm concerned about that, the more towers we put on there that somebody addresses that through Tom or somebody, to be cautious of that.
Yep, and, and he reckons, Greg reviews all the requests on that and does go through them. And then just to make sure to clarify, we won't renew this every year. It just is in effect, but we can terminate it with a 60-day notice. We don't have any requirements on reason. So we won't bring it back up to the council every year to renew it, but we can terminate it anytime with 60 days' notice.
Okay, thank you.
Does, for one of the hotspots, does the, with us moving forward with the new library, would, would the, I know Justin's not here, but would that be one of the spots we'd consider as a?
If their bandwidth would be big enough to handle it, that might be the only drawback.
That was the only-
You know, because I know here at City Hall, from talking with them, you know, just with the usage that we have, there's, the wireless has limitations on the speed and what it can handle. So it wouldn't work at, like here. It may at the library, but I'm not sure about that. But yeah, we can use it anywhere. It doesn't have to be outside. The only reason we picked outside was, you know, we set a first couple outside because we get requests for that. But we can technically put it anywhere.
I was just wondering with the, the library, if that would, like, say, the bandwidth-
Once we get the technical information from them about what it can handle and what Justin would might need, we'll, we'll have them check on that and see.
What?
Okay, any more discussion? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the lease agreement for the water tower.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carrie's. And that brings us to reports. Greg?
Uh, just a quick update. The West Side project, moving along nicely. They will be done with the pipe work this week. And then the street crew will be in to get the last bit of street ready for curb. And then following that, they'll get everything that's gravel now black. The Phase 1 from last fall, that is up to final lift and everything's done over there. So barring anything unforeseen, most of the work should be done before July, with the exception of the pond down at the pool or down the fairgrounds, that won't start until after the fairs open.
I think things are going pretty good up there. I keep waiting for the big bang one of these days.
Yes, it's gone well. They're ahead of schedule and the weather's been pretty good for them.
Mr. Maroney?
I'd say it's been a few months since I've been able to attend a council meeting and I will say that I've missed, missed coming to them. I did watch one on TV though, just to kinda see what was going on. But I want to thank the council and particularly the public during my absence. I think everyone's given a lot of cooperation and, and understanding with delays in response time, et cetera. So I appreciate that. Also, I want to report on behalf of the EDA that last week, they did close on the sale of 18 acres of land in the industrial park to Lawrence Meats. Lawrence is proceeding with a pretty significant project this year in the industrial park. They've been working on it for quite some time and the EDAs have been working with them on a very cooperative basis in the last several months in particular to get that done. So we're pleased to report that. That's all.
Thanks. Welcome back. Chief?
Quite a bit of discussion this evening on our downtown bars. This spring, we have seen an increase in activity at the bar closing times. A troubling one for us is we've had two fights resulted in broken jaws in the last three weeks. One has been sent for review. The other one, we're currently doing the investigation on. But the common factor in all of them comes down to, you know, excessive amounts of alcohol. From a police department standpoint, that's one of those that is very hard for us to, you know, even put together a case that could go back against the, the business or the bartenders. So just so the council's aware, it's not as simple as it sounds. When we get somebody that's, you know, very intoxicated, the way the law is written, it requires the bartender to recognize the obvious state of intoxication. We're very fortunate to have our city attorney here tonight, but all the prosecutors I've talked to says, have told us, basically, it's an unchargeable law because we're never gonna be able to prove the element of intent short of the bartender saying, well, I knew they were drunk and I served them anyway. And most of them won't say that. So for us, what we're doing is, is focusing on the people that are extremely intoxicated. If we need to, we're detoxing them. If they're involved in fights, we are charging them, whether they're felonies or misdemeanors. We're charging everybody that's, that's involved, trying to send the message that if you're coming to Cannon Falls, we want you to come, but we want you to behave yourself because it's our community. We live here and we want you to, to come and behave yourself. So I wanted the council to be aware of this troubling trend for us.
Hey Jeff, if there's any way for you guys to keep records, when we voted to keep bars open to 2 o'clock, I really had a lot of reservation about doing that. And I'd be kinda curious to see if the violent stuff goes up because it's being kept open later at night. Maybe over a six-month or a year's period of time, we could just keep track of that and see if it makes a difference.
I don't know if I'm gonna be able to answer that definitively for you, Leroy. I can tell you, we don't have the problems, you know, Sunday through Thursday, we're closing at midnight. But everybody's working predominantly the, the next day. The extra hour of service of alcohol, certainly can become a factor. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't be having these at 1 o'clock just as easily if, if the, the closing time was one. It just comes down to, you know, people that are nasty drunks when they're drunk. And they get into, get into fights or shoving matches and fights break out. And it's not just, you know, men. We've had several fights this spring from, from females as well, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do you have anything?
Nope.
No? Mark?
Nothing.
Nope.
Public Works Commission met Saturday afternoon. And as Greg already described, where we are in the West Side project, just a heads up for everybody, we'll soon be discussing the East Side 1 project. Also Personnel Committee met and we will be shortly interviewing to fill a open position in the Public Works Department.
Leroy?
Just something for Aaron. You know, we had our budget meeting on our last year's final end. I can remember the 360s in there. We had 60,000 left over. There was 60,000 short, I believe, in the water fund and 60,000 reserve in the sewer fund. And I remember the year before, we had a $96,000 left over after year-end stuff. So I was just wondering if that's done with or are we gonna discuss that at all? Are we gonna wait till budget time? What are we gonna do with that report that we got?
Yeah, it'll go, it'll play into when we discuss budget as far as utility rates for next year. We always take a look at what happened last year, you know, where we came out at, and then that factors into what, what do we do as far as setting rates for next year? So that'll, that'll be part of the discussion. We start talking about rates, which is, like you said, part of that budget discussion.
And that won't start till when?
The utility rate portion of it probably won't be until September, something like that, October. Usually you don't discuss rates.
Roll this all in and just leave it go the way it is for right now?
Yeah, well, we'll look.
You remember I mentioned last year, I didn't like rolling that money into the general fund. I wanted to divide it out between the different things because it goes into the general fund and it's like booking a nickel in there and it doesn't even make any difference. But if we divided it up between the different branches, we could do something with it.
Yep.
So the 60,000, that's what bothers me. If, at Public Works, we cut a lot back on street stuff. If we would take part of that 60 and put it in Public Works, we could do some of these other street projects. That's the only thing I'm suggesting on that.
Okay, and we'll definitely take a look at when we do budget stuff.
And the other thing is that when we do do that, I, I can't help but feel that we're trying to keep that water bill down. And if there's any way we can shift the 60,000 excess from the sewer fund to the water fund to try to keep things neutral, I think we should think about doing that. Okay? The other, the other thing I had, Robbie, was I still have concerns about that we don't seem to get anything going on Progressive Rail over here. And I would like to just, if nothing else, put signs up on the end of that one street and just block it off temporarily. They have agreed to that, I assume, and they're acceptable to that. So at least it shows the neighbors that we're trying to do something up there to get this thing to move along. So I just wanted to bring that up too. That's it.
Phil?
Uh, you, going with what Leroy said about the excess in some of the funds, you know, we couldn't do seal coating this year again because we needed, I guess, 54,000, something like that, to do seal coating. That couldn't be possible yet this year, could it, I mean, to get?
We probably won't do anything different this year than, than what we have planned. I mean, unless it's really necessary, you know, we, we're not putting off if it's gonna cause long-term damage or expenses. It was felt that we can get by without it again this year and that's why it was cut. But I would assume in next year's budget, we're gonna see a lot of those things kinda starting to roll back in again.
And the library, the, some of the, did you have any further discussions on anything about pulling back some of the bids or some, anything like that?
Everything looks like it's still moving forward like we discussed. Next meeting, we'll have the remainder of all the, the bids on the agenda for approval. And at that time, we'll have those other, whatever it was, six or eight value engineering items the council can discuss and see if they wanna make any changes with those. But otherwise, yeah, everything's right on in what we talked about last meeting and it's moving forward. As the asbestos abatement's going on this week right now. And then depending on when the contracts get finalized with the demolition, the demolition will either start Monday or the following Monday. They're, they're gonna kind of see where the contracts are at, but it'll be either starting on the 11th or the 18th. They're not sure yet.
Okay, demolition. Do we have any, has there been any thought of asking the townships to contribute to? Or is that, is that a rather touchy subject?
Well, as a matter of fact, one of the things that is happening now is that our contract with Good Hugh County for library funding is up. And we'll actually have an update at that, maybe at the next meeting. I'll know some more, kind of where we're at with it. Library funding is always kind of a, well, it's a difficult situation because there's no set formula in the state. So there's county library systems. There's like in Good Hugh County where it's, each city has their own. But the county is obligated to contribute a certain amount to it, the maintenance of effort every year. The issue, and it's also one of the very few items of funding where there's a split levy. So generally speaking, when the county levies for the roads, the levy goes against township residents, city residents, everybody. When the county levies for their contributions to the library, it only goes against township residents. City levy goes against the city levy for, city residents for the library. County levy only goes against county residents. And it's one of the very few items that's split that way by statute. So it's actually a unique situation and we're dealing right now is that I've been involved with the last two contract negotiations with Good Hugh County. It's, it's always been ugly and it's never worked out well for the cities. And the issue generally speaking is that city residents pay more in taxes for the library. And the issue generally speaking is that city residents pay more in taxes for the library to offset the underfunding by the county for their residents. So a good example is, is if, if you say it costs a dollar to provide somebody a book, circulation of a book, city residents pay a dollar 20 for that, and county residents pay 80 cents for that. That's been the ongoing issue that we've had, when you talk about library funding and townships and things, is that the county's always underfunded the true cost to provide the service to their residents. We're working on trying to get that fixed, and it's gonna be interesting. Well, you know, we've been meeting as a group of representatives from the different cities to think, to lay out kind of our proposal to the county, and we're actually gonna, we're gonna ask them for their full funding. We've been kind of tired of supporting subsidizing services, so we're gonna request it, we'll see what happens and go from there. But what that means is, is that that's a long answer to your question, but we can't ask townships to individually do it because county actually levies for already. So we have to work through the county to get them to levy appropriate amounts, we can't get them to help, well, we could, but that would be asking for way more than what we're already asking, you know, as far as helping to pay for, you know, facilities and things.
So...
All we're asking is them to pay for the true cost of providing a service.
Right, exactly.
And that's gonna be a major increase from what they're paying right now.
The only other thing is, what, raise fines on them or something?
There are some interesting potential penalties that we're gonna have to discuss because it's, we're getting to the point now where either they pay their share, or we're gonna have to do something different to, you know, to address that. So that'll be an update coming soon, once I get a better idea where the county's at and what happens with our initial proposal, so...
Okay, thank you, Aaron.
I don't have anything, school's getting out at the end of this week, so there'll be more kids on the streets all day long and later in the evening, so just watch out when you're driving. And other than that, the chair will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.